All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the eighth to the last and best attended meeting of the zoning committee of the year. My name is Matt Wussmore. I'm a chair of this committee. I'm joined by my colleagues on the committee, councilmembers Dozier, Norwood, Shook, and Hillis, as well as by councilmember Amos. That constitutes a quorum. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda, seconded by Hillis. We're going to take some voice votes. I believe we can do this one on unanimous consent. Any objection to adopting the agenda? Seeing none, five yes, zero nays. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Hillis. Any discussion or objection? Seeing none, we will take that on unanimous consent, five yes, zero nays. Next up is public comment. Mr. Amos is not on the committee. That's okay. I did make a C minus in my only math class in college, so it wouldn't have been outside the realm of possibility. There are six people signed up for a public comment. I will make a comment beforehand. As everyone in the room knows, no public comments are allowed on legislative items that have gone before or will go before the zoning review board. And so I'm going to keep, I'm going to make a request to the law department that if anybody ventures into that territory, that will end your public comment. So with that in mind, the first person on our list is Amy Hillman. Dennis Tedwell.
Let the record straight, as well as understand your position. I'm not specifically here to talk about what I came to talk about, but I do want to talk about SPI-8, which is not on the agenda, but I have heard that it might be attached to something. And I just wanted to say SPI-8 and Home Park are not the same neighborhood.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. I do believe that discussion of the, as there is a paper ripe for consideration of this committee, concern amendment to SPI-8 that has gone before ZRB, that the specific discussion of SPI-8 and Home Park regulation would be, in fact, a violation of the notice directive, that there would be no public comment outside of the ZRB regarding that matter.
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to state that there was a 2022 Georgia Tech School of City and Regional Planning, conducted to basically do a master plan for Home Park. So they canvassed the neighborhood, they sent emails, they reached out to the stakeholders in Home Park, which are over 10,000 people. Thirty replied. And so Home Park doesn't get involved in a lot of these decisions yet. The thirty-member HPCIA, which is represented by here today, they do have an enormous impact on the majority. They have one vote at MPUE, and they have the thirty members in the land use, usually as a five-four, or five, or eight, eight-nothing. They don't allow people in that meeting. They denied short-term rental, pro-short-term rental operators and homeowners in that neighborhood, they denied them renewal of their memberships once they found out they were against, they were not against short-term rentals. So I just want to set the record straight that HPCI has enormous power with you guys. They've always had. The silent majority is not represented. I have hundreds of friends who go to the Al Farouq Mosque, Muslims, because Home Park is, you know, there's twenty, in that study, there's 2,174 livable units in Home Park, and only 12% are owner-occupied. But you would think that 80% were, based on the narrative that is presented. So when we talk about...
I'm not sure where the clock is, but you have 30 seconds left.
Okay. But I just want, I just wanted to state that nobody speaks up for the silent majority. The Al Farouq Mosque has 10,000 members, and their voices are starting to stir, and it will be heard. Thank you.
Next speaker, Kathy McClure. Good morning.
My name is Kathy McClure. I'm vice president of the Atlanta Short-Term Rental Association. I'm here to speak generally about legal non-conforming uses. In Georgia, if you're operating a rental, a short-term rental legally, and the rules change, your use can be protected as a legal non-conforming use. The Georgia Supreme Court made this crystal clear in Morgan County versus May, where Mrs. May's rentals of less than 30 days were found to be grandfathered because the ban never, because a prior law never specifically prohibited short-term rentals. In Atlanta, there was no ban on short-term rentals until the 2021 licensing ordinance. That ordinance has never been enforced after Amstra challenged the legality of the ordinance itself, and the city itself admitted that the short-term rental ordinance was legally indefensible, legally indefensible. The bottom line, short-term rentals have been operating lawfully all along. Any new ordinance must respect those vested rights. Property owners made investments based on the law at the time. Taking away those rights without due process of law is not just bad policy, it's unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Laura Clemmons.
Hello. I'm Laura Clemmons. As we know, the visitor demand is big and is growing in Atlanta and Georgia. ACVP pegs Atlanta's hospitality industry at over $20 billion, with over 50 million visitors in 2024. Statewide tourism generated over $80 billion of economic impact in 2024. As we know, we are about to see a mega-event surge, which is in 2026. This is a once-in-a-generation peak demand shock that we are about to incur. Last year in September, a little bit of October, Atlanta, well, this whole state, hosted a couple of hurricanes. We hosted thousands of people from Florida, we hosted thousands of people from North Carolina. Every hotel, every short-term rental was booked, and there were people pleading to be brought into other homes of anybody that could open their home. So are we prepared for the world next year? And if we are, we need every short-term rental that isn't, that is active in Atlanta today to be active next year in 2026 for this once-in-a-lifetime surge we are about to see. Thank you.
Next speaker, Ryan Toth, followed by our final speaker, Anthony Williams.
Good day. My name is Ryan Toth. I'm homeowner in Home Park, also a property manager, and we want to put specific regulation on rentals in specific neighborhoods. And I don't get it. I don't get it.
Yes, I'm sorry. The discussion concerning limitations or regulations on rentals in the Home Park neighborhood is a matter that is on this agenda, which has had a hearing before the ZRB, which was the appropriate time for any such public comment.
Forgive me. I'll try to keep it broad, thread the needle here, but I will follow up with an email about all my points of concern here. Generally, my experience has been very positive. I use my home partially for short-term. I think that's important to note. Partially means sometimes we have extended stays, sometimes we don't. But the only reason we have the ability to offer these extended stays is because of our ability to fill those holes with short-term rentals. I'd prefer if we had 12-month leases in my property. They're easier to manage. I do all of the above. But sometimes that's not where the demand is. Currently, it's not where the demand is. We've hosted Georgia Tech parents for graduations. We have hosted folks from the basketball arena for their events. We have hosted, I have a three-month reservation coming up for performers, I think it's four months, for performers at Cirque du Soleil. If we ban these, what am I going to do with those folks? What am I going to do with the rest of the folks on my calendar? I'd also like to note that I have 35 reviews. They're all five stars, every single one of them. I have worked my tail off to get the ability to have that measure. Okay, guys? My tail. I have a ton of money invested into this. I lived at this property for four years. To my knowledge, we've never been a burden on city resources. Leaks have never been called. We've never had trash being an issue. All I have is positive feedback from the people that I'm hosting, the people that I'm bringing to Atlanta, and I want to bring them back. And I have people that are coming, and they want to be able to come. Again, I'll follow up with an email about my points of concern. I just wanted to introduce myself, a name to a face. Okay? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Final speaker, Anthony Williams. We are not deferring time in committee. So you've got two minutes, or three minutes, if you want. Okay. That concludes public comment, which takes us to item F, ordinances for first reading. Ms. Director Holmes, if you will sound those five captions.
Good morning, councilmembers. Item number one, 2501468-Z2517, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from single-family residential to single-family residential for property located at 590 Cedar Avenue Northwest. Item number two, 2501469-U2511, ordinance by zoning committee for a special use permit for a daycare center pursuant to section 16060051B for property located at 1146 Sheridan Drive. Item number three, 2501470-U2515, an ordinance by zoning committee for a special use permit for an outdoor sales area pursuant to section 16370071K for property located at 1515 Howell Mill Road. Item number four, 2501471-Z2503, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from single-family residential Beltline Overlay to East Atlanta Village Neighborhood Commercial District Beltline Overlay for property located at 1138 Glenwood Avenue. And item number five, 2501472, an ordinance by zoning committee to repeal ordinance 2501198 adopted by the Atlanta Council, Atlanta City Council on June 2nd, 2025, and approved by Operation of Law on June 11, 2025, in which intended to rezone property located at 1138 Glenwood Avenue Southeast from single-family residential Beltline Overlay to East Atlanta Village Beltline Overlay as a result of this adoption and approval prior to the completion of the notice and public hearing requirements of the state's zoning procedures law and for other purposes.
Thank you. Takes us to section G, which is ordinances for second reading. Without any objection, we can take items five, excuse me, six, eight, and 11 as a block. The recommendation is going to be to approve.
Item number six, 2501180, an ordinance by councilmember Jason H. Winston to rezone property located at 335 Salt Hill Avenue from single-family residential to mixed residential commercial to modify the official zoning map and for other purposes. Staff and ZRB recommendation is approval. NP recommendation is approval conditional. Item number eight, 2501258, an ordinance by councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet to rezone a portion of 2099 Family Road Southwest from single-family residential to community business district for erection of a freestanding sign and for other purposes. Staff and ZRB recommendation approval. NP recommendation approval conditional. And item number 11, 2501358-U2502, an ordinance by zoning committee for a special use permit for a hotel pursuant to section 16340071J for property located at 981 Howell Mill Road Northwest and 1,000 Watkins Street Northwest. Staff and ZRB recommendation is approval conditional. NP recommendation is approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on items six, eight, and 11? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Hillis, seconded by Dozier. Please open that vote.
The vote is open.
Vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. Those items are favorable. Next up, item number seven.
Item number seven, 2501249-Z2543, an ordinance by councilmembers Byron D. Amos and Dustin Hillis to amend Part 16, Chapter 18H of the 1982 zoning ordinance of the City of Atlanta as amended, so as to create a new section, 1618H004, to create regulations for short-term rentals in the Home Park neighborhood and for other purposes. Staff and ZRB recommendation is approval conditional. NP recommendation is approval. And there is a substitute for this item, sorry.
I'll adjourn to motion to bring forward the substitute. Motion by Hillis, seconded by Dozier. Please open that vote.
The vote is open.
Five yes, zero nays. The substitute is before us. I don't know if Mr. Amos has any comments he'd like to make, but at some point before or after those, it would be helpful if the law department could opine on the changes in the substitute. Ms. Robinson.
Yes. Good morning, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. This substitute changes the wording of the actual amendment to the text of the zoning code to state that the use of short-term rental as defined in the code is prohibited. Currently, it states that licenses for short-term rentals shall be prohibited to be issued. So it's just kind of a shifting of the obligation from the city not to issue a license to just any persons seeking to operate that particular use, being prohibited from doing so. This is in keeping with the appropriate language for a zoning code amendment.
Okay. And then this committee received a couple emails over the weekend and a couple comments just now around vested rights. Can you talk about how this piece of legislation impacts that in the future?
Yes, it is, in fact, a well-established principle of land use law, that if there is a regulation that supersedes the previously permitted use, then the previous permitted use will be able to continue as a legal non-conforming use. They will, people will be, as colloquially termed, grandfathered into that use. So if you're permitted to perform that use, in this case, short-term rental pursuant to the issuance of a license, you will be quote-unquote grandfathered into that use regardless of whether or not this particular ordinance were to be adopted and approved.
License having been issued at any point since the legislation we introduced, or that passed council back in March of 2021.
That's right. That's right. Since 2021, persons have been eligible to receive and apply for, if qualified, a license to conduct this particular activity under the city's police powers. That's not a land use regulation. But if you have received such a license, or frankly, have applied for one, and you're submitted a full application for that at the time that this ordinance is approved, if it is, then the issue of vested rights will be addressed through the legal non-conforming use.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, just so that, you know, there aren't any surprises as we get ready to vote on this legislation. I've been very consistent with every STR-related legislative item that we've had before us, that I have been adamant that we enforce the existing STR legislation that was referenced earlier, that was passed by the previous council back in 2021. And until a judge or some other member of the judiciary tells us otherwise in terms of what we are allowed or not allowed to do, I am reticent to support any changes to the legislative code regarding STRs until we enforce the existing legislation. I recognize the various opinions that our law department and other members of our body have expressed around the potential legal implications of our existing code, but I say let a judge tell us what to do. And so I want to thank my colleague, councilmember Amos, and I know he's been leading on this issue since we have been in this office and listening to his community and making sure that he can respond to their needs and respond to what they're demanding. But for me, I don't want to see changes made without having fully implemented the existing code that we approved back in 2021. So I will be voting no, wanting to make sure everyone knew why. I think it's important that we provide STR relief to our communities as best as possible. I'm with community members all the time and trying to deal with issues around party houses, around folks, even if it's not a party house situation, folks not being good neighbors. But I think we have a good framework to manage and enforce that, that we aren't fully implementing, and I want to see that happen. So wanted to state why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote, but wanting to make sure my colleagues know that, you know, I support y'all and y'all trying to improve the quality of our communities. But for me, this is about making sure that we do what we said we were going to do four years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Dozier. Any other comments? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Amos.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me allow to speak in your committee. This is a very unique situation. Understanding what we're saying about enforcement and doing this around the city, but we're asking for something to be done in a very unique, specified zoning in a unique neighborhood. You know, enforcement, non-enforcement, continuously doing nothing should not be an option as well. Here's an opportunity that the law department has agreed in some form or fashion that we can move forward with. Everyone is not happy. The community would not be happy with this. The developers that operate inside of Home Park would not be happy. But it is something that at least we, as the city, can begin to do, to see if we can build some type of enforcement around this as we move forward. This particular community has been asking for this or some form of this for years now, long before I got here and some of my colleagues got here. And I think this is as close as we have been able to get. So I will ask that this committee pass this on favorably, or if not, just pass it on to the full council. But just continuously not doing anything, I don't think is an option, as we do need to get ready for the World Cup, as someone brought up. But we also need to remember the people that live here and stay here and will be here after the World Cup as well. And I think this is a good opportunity to show that we, as a body, we as leaders in this city, is willing to do something to start supporting those that have been here and been the fabric. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have a quick comment that's actually a blend of the two that we just heard. Anyone else have anything to say? All right. As the person who wrote the ordinance that we passed in 2021, councilmember Dickens, now Mayor Dickens, introduced it. We were co-sponsors. I find it very frustrating that we are here four and a half years later, never having attempted to enforce it in its entirety. And that's not anybody's fault who's in this room. But I've been talking to folks in this neighborhood for six years on this issue, and in other neighborhoods, too. And it is very frustrating, because this is what I worried would happen, which is people want relief and deserve it, and we've got another paper that's coming down the pike, too, for a different part of town, and it's because we never enforced what we should have been enforcing for the last four years. So I find that frustrating. I'm going to abstain today because I want the paper to move forward, and I'm worried about the precedent it's setting and how we're going to enforce things in our other 242 neighborhoods. So with that, I will entertain a motion. Motion from Hillis, seconded by Shook. Please open that vote.
The vote is open.
Three yes, one nay, one abstention. That item is favorable, and we'll move forward with that recommendation to the full council. Next up, items nine, 10, and 12 can be taken as a block.
Item number nine, 2501281, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from mixed residential commercial conditional Beltline Overlay to mixed residential commercial conditional Beltline Overlay for change of conditions for property located at 1283 and 1295 Meredith Boulevard Northwest. Staff, ZRB, and NP recommendation is approval conditional. Item number 10, 2501356-Z2540, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from single-family residential and single-family residential conditional to planned development housing for property located at 1068, 1070, 11, 1068 and 1070, High Tower Road, 1168, 8th Street Rear, 1111, 3rd Street Northwest. For staff recommendation and ZRB recommendation is approval conditional. NP recommendation is approval. And item number 12, 2501359-U2516, an ordinance by zoning committee for a special use permit for a Colombarian pursuant to section 16040051A for property located at 4465 Northside Drive Northwest. Staff and ZRB recommendation is approval conditional. NP recommendation is approval.
I'll make a motion to amend these items per the recommendations from the ZRB, seconded by Hillis. Please open that vote.
The vote is open.
Vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. Those items are amended. I'll make a motion to approve as amended, seconded from Dustin Hillis. Seeing no discussion, please open that vote.
One moment.
Five yes, zero nays. Those items are favorable as amended. Next up, without objection, we can take items 13 through 19 as a block. The recommendation will be to refer.
Item number 13, 2501418-Z2544, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from single-family residential to planned development housing for properties located at 1469, 1473, 1477, and 1483, Hosea L. Williams Drive Southeast. Item number 14, 2501419-Z2546, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from community business district conditional Beltline Overlay to community business district conditional Beltline Overlay for change of conditions for property located at 1247 Raff David Abernathy Boulevard. Item number 15, 2501420-Z2549, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from light industrial conditional to light industrial for property located at 1488 Bolton Road Northwest. Item number 16, 2501421-Z2550, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from Vine City Special Public Interest District Subarea 6, West Side Affordable Workforce Housing Overlay to Vine City Special Public Interest District Subarea 5, West Side Affordable Workforce Housing Overlay for property located at 67 Griffin Street Northwest. Item number 17, 2501422-Z2552, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from single-family residential to mixed residential commercial for property located at 2410, 2430, 2436, and 2440, Jonesboro Road Southeast, 808, 816, and 824, and 830 Hardest Street Southeast. Item number 18, 2501423-Z2556, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from heavy industrial Beltline Overlay to mixed residential commercial Beltline Overlay for property located at 684 Law Street and 679 and 685 Glass Street Northwest. And item number 19- Glass Street Northwest. And item number 19, 2501424-Z2557, an ordinance by zoning committee to rezone from single-family residential to single-family residential for property located at 1037 Boulder Crest Drive Southeast.
There's no discussion. I'll make a motion to refer these items to ZRB, seconded by Hillis. The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. Those items are referred. Items 20 and 21, without objection, can also be taken as a block as the recommendation will be to hold.
Item number 20, 2501433, an ordinance by councilmembers Howard Shook to amend the 1982 Atlanta zoning ordinance of the City of Atlanta by replacing chapter 18I, SPI 9, Buckhead Villas, Special Public Interest District regulations, and chapter 18L, SPI 12, Buckhead Linux Station, Special Public Interest District with new chapters and for other purposes. And item number 21, 2501434, an ordinance by councilmember Howard Shook to amend part 16 of the 1982 zoning ordinance of the City of Atlanta as amended so as to prohibit short-term rentals and residential zoning divisions and for other purposes. Just to hold that item.
Motion from Shook to hold, which I will second. The vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yes, zero nays. Those items are held. Are no items coming off of held, which means that concludes our legislative agenda. I will make one comment. The regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning committee on August 25, which would normally take place at 11:00 a.m., will, I believe, take place at 10:00 a.m. due to some shuffling that week. And so wanted to make that announcement for the public. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.